Good evening. It being April 25th, 2019. This is the Acushnet Planning Commission. Is there a motion to open the meeting?
The motion we open.
Second.
Fall in favor? This meeting is being audio and videotaped from Mass General Law. If you'd be kind enough to introduce yourself, starting with Rick, coming around this way.
Uh, Rick Ellis.
Henry Young Planner.
Brian Dishamps.
Phil Mello.
Mark Sinnerizio. With that, gentlemen, have you had an opportunity to read the minutes of March 28th, 2019?
Yes. I did. Motion to approve the minutes is... So...
Zero seconds. All in favor? Unanimous. Item number two.
I'm the lord of the bank.
Payroll, payroll. Yeah, budget for... One, two, three, four, and one for Winwin Car. You can kind enough to sign those, Rick, and pass them around, please. Folks, it's mail. You want this one, Henry?
The updates?
Yep.
Yep. Thank you.
Let's just want to give it to Rick.
Great reading tonight.
Hope she's... No? I couldn't tell her in a long, long time. All right. Uh, let's see. Blue Fields. Watch out for the rain. The police is mad. Police is all made up of marijuana. Mad at police. Item number four. Point of update, we'll do that at the end?
Yes.
Item number five. Signing needs a state document after appeal. The appeal is all done. Gentlemen, we're going to start with the mile out. I'll hand it around to you, Rick, so you can bring it around. Plus, we have all these over here, Henry. Am I correct?
Right, there's a sign hanging over the chair.
Yep.
Signing party. Brian's a magic man.
You're closest, Brian. You can grab them.
Oh, okay.
No.
What's the... What date do we put on? Is it the date of approval or the date of...
I would leave it open just to make sure for the town clerk. I don't remember on that.
Well, you have date endorsed. Uh, date approved, date endorsed. Do you know, Henry, what dates we should put on that?
The date approved is...
So it's approved and endorsed the same day?
Yeah.
Okay. Don't put a date there yet.
Okay.
Signing, city. Might as well start early and keep signing as we go along. Actually, I think until 6:45.
Who are you?
This fancy one. With that, we'll take a five-minute break while we're signing all these slips, and we'll be back to have the public hearing.
Same thing, just a shocker.
Back from signing all these reports. Took us a little while, but we had to sign all these for Mr. Meneses. And with that, I can give you the mile out, sir, and this letter from the town clerk. If you'd be kind enough, when you registered that at the registry deeds, just call Dawn or Henry or myself and give us the book and the page, and we'll be all set.
All right. Thank you so much.
No, thank you.
Is it... Do I take any of these?
Uh, no.
None for us.
That's all yours. Very good. You have to ask Jeff for one.
Yeah, that's right. Thank you very much, everyone. Appreciate it.
With that, it being a little later than we thought, 6:45 at 6:54. With that, we'll go from a regular meeting to public hearing on zoning proposal from Jim Merritt, building inspector. Is there a motion to go into a public hearing?
No more.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Acushnet Planning Commission notice of public hearing zoning proposals. The Acushnet Planning Commission will hold a public hearing on zoning amendment proposal on Thursday, April 25th, 2019, at 6:45 PM in the planning office at 130 Main Street, Piling Way, second floor. The issues may be on the warrant for the next town meeting scheduled for May 13th, 2019. The public is encouraged to attend. The following sections will be addressed to see if the town will vote to amend Article 8 zoning bylaws, sections 1.2.1B, 3.3.1C, 3.3.1.1B, 3.3.1.1E, 3.3.1G...
You're doing great.
Sorry, I screwed it up.
No, you're right.
I thought I'd get through it, huh? 3.3.2G, 3.3.3F, 3.3.4G, 3.5A, 3.9. Will take any other action relative there on. A copy of the proposed amendments has been placed on file and is available for review at the town clerk's office during regular business hours. This was in the paper April 11th and April 18th. With that, I guess I'll turn it over to Henry?
Sure.
Or turn it over to Jim? Whichever.
I'll start it.
Great.
So, again, just a little history. Jim Merritt, building inspector, has been the primary mover for these amendments. We've been working collaboratively on the language. The bulk of the recommended amendments were reviewed and vetted by the planning board at our last meeting. And what you have before you is a copy of what remained as a result of that vetting. So, we need to go through this one more time in our public hearing. Mr. Merritt is here with us tonight to answer any questions. And then, at the end of the public hearing, or at the tail end of the public hearing, the planning board needs to make a vote to recommend forwarding these to the government for inclusion in the warrant and for any go-to-town meetings in May of this year. I've also been working with Brian Noble, town administrator, and Pam Labonte, the clerk. And we have a draft warrant. And what we are reviewing tonight appears as a tail end of the warrant document as appendix four. So everything we're talking tonight is already in the draft warrant. Okay? So, we will... We'll be going through this. Anything... When we go to town meeting, and there's a vote on this, you cannot add to this. You can only subtract from this. So, again, from...
So, tonight's all about, you want to...
Tonight is... We can't add anything tonight. We can only review and prove what's here or subtract from what's here. And really, the subtraction should probably, at this point, happen on the floor of town meeting. And we can make a recommendation if we think there's a subtraction that's necessary. Okay, so I'll go through these. And then, Mr. Merritt is over here, building inspector. And if you have any questions, you can direct them to Jim. So, the first, section 1.2B provides some clarification to assist Jim in the enforcement of the bylaws, which is his responsibility. So, there's this addition of "to" and "from" the local portion of the lot unless permitted as a common drive under section 3.3D-13. We added the 3.3D-13 at the last meeting. Does anybody have a question for Mr. Merritt on that? Or, Mr. Merritt, do you wish to comment on that?
No, no one to ask a question.
Okay. 1.2B for the definition of structure, we just replaced... We struck the word "yard," which I think was more of a typo than anything, and replaced it with the word "setback." So, that's a clarification. Does anybody have a question on that one? Mr. Merritt, do you have any comments?
Nope. That works great.
Okay. All right. Then we go to section three. I'm still... I'm at the bottom of page one. So, section three, again, a clarification. So, 3.3C 14A8, okay? The language to be added is "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of any principal structure thereby served." To help us understand what that means, what we're saying is... We have... Here's a road providing the frontage for the common drive. Here's the common drive. No principal structure can be built within this 100-foot radius circle.
No. Nothing can be built there, but there also...
I have the principal structure. No principal structure should be built within that.
And there can't be a structure there existing already. It won't be. Just because you got the 40-foot road frontage, right? 40 feet of...
So, I'll look for it.
I'm not sure I understand. If there's an existing dwelling there already, you can't put the common driveway in? Jeff, am I confused with this? No, I haven't said that. I mean, the way the bylaw currently reads is "No common driveway shall be constructed within 150 feet of the structure that meets the construction standards herein." I'm not sure what that means. The second part of it is "All principal structures shall be serviced by a driveway that is located within 150 feet of the structure that meets the construction standards herein." So, to me, even though they're sequential in the bylaws, they kind of contradict one another, and I'm not sure which either one of them says. So, all I did was rewrite it to make... And you just want this in there? Well, I just rewrote one to make, you know, in talking with Henry, to see if we'd come up with something that makes sense. And that's what we came up with.
So, would that be any part of the common driveway?
This common driveway would be constructed to service principal structures?
Yeah.
In this...
It's more or less related to the common driveway that's constructed for the dwellings to be built at the end or that are served by that common driveway.
So, this is the main part, main driveway coming in, right? Then we got one going, one house, one going to the other.
Correct.
So, what we're saying is from the end of this main part of the common driveway coming in, it's going to be 150 radius from that. Is that what we're saying?
Right. Okay. So, when you're building your new principal structure, it has to be outside of that 100-foot radius?
Outside of that. Okay. Where the main part of the common driveway ends?
Correct. Does that make sense?
Yeah. Yeah, the driveway is all the way up. It's right there is the way you thought.
Correct. Exactly. Okay.
Yeah, what it prevents really is that if you... A common driveway can service three separate dwellings.
Yep.
So, you don't have a common driveway with people buzzing by it, you know, on basically a dirt road all the way. It has, you know, it has to stop at a certain point, and then you take over your own physical responsibility for your private driveway into your house. Got you.
I was honestly thinking too, for fire engines or whatever, keep it all open. I was thinking that might have been the reason.
That's more related to the second, I think.
Right.
So, for 3.3C 14B9, since all principal structures shall be serviced by a driveway that is located within 150 feet of that structure which meets the construction standards there. And what that's talking about, and this really, we're not changing anything at all, but we're just clarifying for Jim's purpose that if this is the end of the common drive, the house has to be within 100 feet. The principal structure should be within 100 feet of that circle.
If I can, too, Henry.
Yeah, sure.
This is what we're dealing with right now. This is the... This is the common... Now, if you look at 3.3C 14, okay, it's driveway construction standards. A actually represents the standards applied for common driveways. But when you get to B, which is what's currently there, that's all... That's all driveways. It doesn't make a spec... It's not specific enough to say that's only for common driveways. So, what we've done is we've changed B to be number nine to clarify it. So that it's only applied to common driveways, not all driveways. Just makes it easier for you, too, Jim.
Makes it easier for you, absolutely.
Great. Fantastic.
That I think was the most complicated one.
I just stole my seat.
I don't care. Is this the one you have a question about? In the book.
Yep.
Right. Okay. 3.1B2, we removed "skeeto." Skeet's out. We're topographically challenged here. This is probably... I was like, we're just removing.
No problem.
3.1E, just for Jim, he's stating "Lot width shall not be less than 80 feet at any location within the parameters of required lot size." This language, I think, makes Jim's job a little easier.
Yeah, what that's basically telling me anyways, the way it were read before, is that you can't have something less than 80 feet in your lot. You know, but if you have the minimum width at the minimum lot depth, so you have a good constructable lot, what happens behind that lot? In other words, if you have a good buildable lot that meets the 60,000-square-foot requirements, but you have two and a half acres, can a portion of the rest of that lot be less than 80 feet? I would say, yeah. Okay. Guys, all set with that?
Yep. Okay, so, the 3.3.1G and 3.3.2G, 3.3.3F, and 3.3.4G... I watched how you did that.
You did good, yeah.
Are all the same. Okay? It's just, it speaks to permits. "Prior to the issuance of a permit, Jim, the zoning enforcement officer, shall request a review and comment from the following, which shall respond in writing within 14 days." And then, there's a specification of what the superintendents of streets will do, what the planning director will do, what CONCOM will do, Fire Chief, Police Chief, Board of Health. This really memorializes what we've begun to do at our, I can call it, Tuesday morning department meetings. But it will... Requires us to put our comments in writing. So, Jim has, you know, the correct paper trail to help him enforce bylaws during construction.
Guys, all set with that?
Yep.
Okay. There you go.
3.5 site plan approval, 3.5A1, 2, and 3. Essentially, lower the threshold that would trigger site plan approval. We went from, in 3.5A1, we went from 30 parking spaces to 10 parking spaces. In 3.5A2, we went from gross floor area of 5,000 to 3,000. And we went from impervious coverage from 12,000 to 5,000. So, it... I think it brings a proper review on the part of Jim into play at a more appropriate level.
Guys, you all set with that? You okay?
Comments, Jim, on that?
Um, no. I mean, if the board's comfortable with that, I mean, what we tried to do there was if you go back and look at the bylaws, non-residential development really is listed as you can go up to 3,000 square feet of structure. But, so, that's already a requirement, but to allow, only to put in site plan review at 5,000, they kind of contradict one another. The second one is, you know, there's, for non-residential development, when you begin to talk about land development, it's already part of the stormwater bylaw. It says if you disturb more than 5,000 square feet, you know, you need to file. So, 12,000 really is... So, yeah, they just kind of follow other sections of the bylaw more closely like that.
You're cleaning it up.
Really?
They're trying. Makes it easier for Jim. That's great. Guys, all set with that? You know, I may say, if I can, Mr. Chairman, I mean, I've worked in a number of towns, both as a builder and in similar capacities, and the bylaw in this format really is very simple and very easy to read and neat and clean and well-done. There's very small things that, you know, just need to be tweaked here and there, and I kind of commend you guys for, you know... It is. It's easy for me. I mean, you look at some bylaws, they're... Well, we commend you and Henry. You guys have been working on this, you know? We're just here to say yes, no, whatever, but we could... You two guys have been working on this real hard, and we appreciate what you do to make it easier for you, Jim, because it's got... It all comes down to the lawyers if there's a mess up, right? Well, there is... There's one aspect in our, you know, and I realize we shouldn't really be talking. One thing that kind of was hoping to get across was the aspect of a 200-foot-wide section at the end of the access easement for a retreat lot, because right now it reads 150 feet, but we have 75-foot setbacks. So, most recently, I'm sending people to the zoning board for variances, which technically, by state law, well, technically by state law, the zoning board can't grant. You know, so you have people who end up with, you know, a 30-foot area in the front of their lot that they're limited to build their house in. You know, I think even just, you know, if you go to 200 feet, now you have a 50-foot section, and, you know, everybody should be able to build a comfortable home within that 50-foot-wide section. You know, so I'm hoping at some point in time, we can work on that. We'll take it one step at a time. Like you said, you got a lot here. You guys all set with that, on site plan approval?
Yep.
Anybody okay? Yes.
3.9, the temporary moratorium on medical marijuana treatment sentence is expired, so this is a complete removal of this section from the zoning bylaws.
Got you.
Let's see. Any questions? Did you sign the... You said you... Okay. Jim, did you get a chance to sign that?
You want to go?
Okay. There are no questions. I would recommend that the board make a motion to approve the proposed amendments to Article 8 of the zoning bylaws and recommend their inclusion on the warrant for the May 2019 town meeting. And this recommendation will be made through the board's lit.
So... Zero seconds.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Unanimous. Thank you very much for your time, Jim. Thank you, Neil. Appreciate you coming in. Thank you, Henry, you guys for both working on it. Appreciate it immensely.
Hey, you made that job pretty easy, haven't you?
Thank you. Now, I don't know if this is Form 7...
Done in...
Do we have to do anything on this Form 7, whatever it is? I don't know.
Must do that.
Pass that down to Henry. I don't understand. That was just in the packet. I didn't know if we had to sign anything on that or just give it back to Pam. There's two of them, yeah, so...
You can continue the business of being reading this.
Okay.
We can cover this in finer updates.
Now, is there a motion to close the public hearing on the bylaws?
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor? All right. With that, we will go to our next person, 7:15. We got Ben Reese, Form A. Gentlemen? Please come in and introduce yourself to TV ladies.
Hey, you're back, aren't you? I'm back. Hi. Formal introduction?
Absolutely. Tell them who you are.
My name is Ben Reese. I'm here with a Form A, the subdivision plan for La Bonki Street.
I'm Alan Ewing, engineering.
I was wondering where he was.
All right. We've got Main Street down here. We come up Pembroke Avenue, and this is a paper street, Bonki Street. We're creating three Form A lots here. This is 16,916,000, and this is 47,100. We also show the wetlands line here. And we have adequate space to build a single-family house on those properties. Because that's a paper street, we have to make road improvements to make those buildable. And again, we have the three lots up here. And I'm showing a paved road coming from Pembroke down the end here, about 494 feet. And what we're proposing for a road is a paved road, 18 feet wide. And then, on the right-hand side of the road is your head itself. There's going to be a 12-inch berm, and then, after that, a four-foot paved sidewalk. So, we're going to have approximately 23 feet paved all the way across, separated the berm and the side to sidewalk. We're putting a hammerhead down here. So, what I created was a turnaround easement. And that's going to be 30 feet by 15 feet, so that a vehicle can come down here, back in there, go out, either way they want to turn around. We have sewer down in Pembroke Avenue, and we're coming straight down the middle of the 40-foot way. We're going to put a hydrant at the end so that we can service these three dwellings that will be built there. And there's water out there as well, so we're going to bring a six-inch ductal line pipe with a hydrant on the end right here, so that we can service town water to each of those houses. I show the road profile. We have the existing centerline profile and left and right, and then, proposed grade. Basically, we're coming down, coming back up again, and then, sloping to the end. And this road is going to be, as you can see in my cross-section here, it's all going to be one straight line across. There's no ground, so every... All, any stormwater is going to hang onto my client's property.
What did you say again about the sidewalk?
Yeah, the sidewalk is a four-foot-wide sidewalk. So, we're going to have a paved road with a 12-inch berm, a 5-grom, and then, there'll be a four-foot-wide paved sidewalk.
All the way from...
All the way from Pembroke. All the way to the end.
This plan was reviewed by department chairs several weeks ago, and we came up with this plan that kind of meant everybody's...
Just only sidewalks on one side of the street, that's it.
There are no properties being served on the... That would be the west side.
On this side?
Right.
Nobody's, no.
Right. I believe this house is already on each one of them, so...
Correct.
Yeah, we did a sidewalk, yeah.
We did. The piece up in the northeast is town-owned. For some reason, we own that little matchbook piece of one. In fact, titles, I guess.
Gentlemen, any questions? Been reviewed at the Tuesday morning meeting. Everybody's happy?
Yes.
Fire Chief, Police Chief, Building Inspector, Board of Health?
Town Administrator.
Okay.
Wasn't the question last time was about the street, wasn't it? You brought it in front of us before.
Yes.
What was it?
The sidewalks. Whether or not we can sidewalks, so we've included those now.
Right. And we're not encroach, or this design does not encroach on...
Does not encroach on the driveway now.
Right. Okay.
Couple of years ago, didn't you want to get this done before Christmas? Couple of years ago, didn't you want to get this done before Christmas?
And everyone, I was like, I did not understand why. It's like, no, this is so straightforward.
It should be done before Christmas now, right?
Why, you guys have a good memory.
That's right.
So that's this business village, is that what this is?
Yes.
So the lot size is probably okay, ten thousand square feet, the frontage is there too?
Yeah, they got water and storage.
I don't have a problem with it, I mean, obviously, it's contingent, the buildability of lots is contingent on getting the road constructed and approved.
Now, you sent the buzz list up, you give any green copies back, did you get those?
No, this is the Form A.
It says Form A.
Oh, I got the wrong one, this one must have been the last one.
I will make a motion to approve the plan, this is again contingent upon the road being constructed in accordance with the plan possessed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous. Do you have a mylar, sir?
I do.
Form A paperwork? You've got ten copies, probably nine copies here that we have to sign, plus a mylar, we'll take the mylar first if you have it.
All right.
And while the gentleman is signing, how many pages on the mylar, one?
Just one.
Yeah, that's good, see, that's an easy one tonight, huh?
Don't try to be easy.
Put that Form A filled out and stamped by the town clerk, yes. Yes. And there's subdivision check list. So he has the longer form of check, he has mylar, yes.
Easy. Easy to make.
Got all the stuff that we need to sign these papers. And when you go to register at the registry deeds, do you find out to call one of us with the book and the page? So we can put it on our files, please?
I was just trying to give you a minute to go in.
Take those and just give it to Rick. So you can hand it over, let me see, a quick look. Make it easy for your Rick, flip him over and sign?
I'll miss you.
No.
I have a friend that does real estate development, and so I was all excited when I bought the property, and I went to him, I told him, you know, I think we'll be able to get this road in before the meeting closes the plant around Christmas time, and he almost locked me out of his house.
Then June, wow.
Hey, I was all for you, I'm more proud of you, you know?
No, no, you guys have been great.
Confirmation to get through to, have you done any filings yet?
I've not, yeah, I wanted to make...
Yeah, you might not make Christmas this year.
That's yours, bro.
Thank you. And so, since I'm just the rookie here, what do I do with this now, bring it to the registry?
Registry deeds, register, they give you the book and the page, and give us the book and the page, and you can stop spending your money on building the road. Do we need anything else on this, Henry, everything's all set, right?
There's nothing that we need to do on that.
Our next one appointment is at seven-thirty, I don't see anybody else here, so we'll take a five-minute break while we're writing these papers. We'll break, it being seven-twenty-nine, we have three oh one Perry Hill, David Ekin, you kind of have to introduce yourselves, tell us why you are here, David, and what you'd like to propose.
For the record, I'm David Ekin from Schneider Associates, I'm here representing Mark Francois, who's with me here. We're only here for discussion purposes, and upon conclusion of the discussion, we actually would invite the board to go look at the property, so that we can continue the discussion possibly the next meeting. And what I'd like to do is just take you through the packet that I give you, one at a time, so that you can understand what we're trying to accomplish, and where we started way back in the day, and where we are now. We'll just start with the first plan, which is basically an overview, an aerial of the property. The, I'll point out, the Francois house is this house that you see in the photograph, okay? The lots to the north, ignore them, they don't exist, there's only one house lot there, not three. That was an initial concept that we did for Inothea Butter, Jean Snow. And you'll see that he owns this house, his brother owns the one to the south. He owns a particular, the lonely part of the property, and the southern part of the property is owned by the brother. We're not here for the brother, just for Mark. So, this shows you that there is a way which comes off of Perry Hill Road, and kind of wings all the way up to that back field, and that way has existed since as far back as eighteen seventy-one. If you go to page two, page two is a survey plan which was prepared by a local land surveying company, engineering land surveying company, and it laid out a thirty-foot-wide right-of-way on paper for the deeds that went back, you know, for this ancient way. Mark owns lot twenty-five B, and, which is now more than just twenty-five B, right now on the assessors map, it's four or five lots, it's four lots on the assessors map, which we'll get to. Lot twenty-five A is owned by his brother, again, we're not here for that lot, that's also subdivided into various lots. If you turn to the next page, you'll essentially see Mark's lot a little more in depth. This was a plan done by another company which surveyed the wetlands. You can see the gravel road, the way, the ancient way that runs through the property, and it shows his existing house, septic system, and the wetlands on the east side and the west side. And again, that, it's labeled on this plan as lot twenty-five, but if you turn the page, you'll see the next plan which subdivided the property into a bunch of retreat lots. And this was done back in...
Oh-six.
Oh-six, so thirteen years ago, the brothers came in with one plan and divided the two lots into seven lots. There's some ugly configurations to this plan, if you can see, particularly lot, one labeled as parcel one, goes up and around another lot, there was a reason for that, but we don't have to get into that. This is how they exist on the assessors map, they have existed since they were developed as retreat lots. You can see that under this initial plan, the goal was to have two common driveways, one to service three houses to the left, and then one to service three houses to the right. Hard to follow, but you've got to look for the circles to the left and the right. And that was the initial plan. And again, that's how it exists today. Now, if you go to the next plan, this is, this is the street map of the town of Christian. It's called the official map of the town of Christian, and if you scroll down to, you can find Perry Hill Road, as it enters Rochester, you see that dash line. Okay, that, if you look at the legend, it's an unpaved, unaccepted street, so it does show up on the town map. Did anybody find that?
Got one?
Yep.
Okay, if you go to the next plan, this is a map which goes back to eighteen seventy-one, and the block that's highlighted to the right, right here, shows the same way, just the way the town map showed. This shows that it existed back in, up to the, as far back as eighteen seventy-one.
That is true.
Your next plan is another map, goes back to eighteen ninety-five, very similar, and this also shows the way. These maps were, these maps were dug up in registry by an attorney back several years ago, about seven years or eight years ago, for when we did our company, if you turn to the next page, we came before the planning board with a Form C subdivision for the property to Inoa. It was a twenty-eight-acre parcel, a lot of it was field, open field. And when we filed that plan, attorney John Bentley was on board for the applicant at that time, and he submitted a memo, which I'll give to you. This is in your files from that project, I don't expect you to read it tonight. They put you in the slip material. But essentially, he used the information that he dug up for the old ancient way, to call it an ancient way, and we determined that it was an ancient way, and if you follow through the... He followed through the paperwork, he went through town council and everything, he determined, so that we could prove that this property, which is the old Trip property, he created the way, and it's existed, you know, for a century. And that way provided him access to his property, so this lot had no frontage, we created, we created a cul-de-sac through the definitive subdivision process, so that we can create frontage for one lot. Initially, he was very aggressive, and he wanted three lots, and we came in, and that's what you see on page one, and that was, it was quickly pushed back to just one lot. Page, the next page shows the actual construction, what we would propose, which is a construction of a cul-de-sac. It was a gravel cul-de-sac, this has a profile for the road, cross-section, drainage swale and whatnot. And this cul-de-sac was actually built, it exists today, and the applicant was actually Jean Snow, he was the trustee of the trust, he's not with us anymore, he eventually sold it to another gentleman who actually built the house, so there's a house back there in the field, and he has a farm, a lot of cattle, I guess. So, you can see on our plan, you know, we call it, it's a thirty-foot-wide ancient way, which existed and was proven over time. So, the last page is a summary of what we want to do, which, you know, back in oh-six, they didn't do, didn't do any investigation on the ancient way, so if you have an ancient way, you can create legal frontage off of that ancient way. So, what this plan shows is the thirty-foot-wide dash way, which we would like to turn into our frontage and reconfigure the ugliness of that retreat lot development, and create conventional lots. And this is just a conceptual idea, we would have to go, we have multiple steps in order to come before you with an A and R plan, which would be, we need to upgrade the road, which gets you across this property. Right now, it's just a one-lane gravel road, we'd like you to go look at it, we'd like some direction as to what would satisfy the planning board for suitable width, so that Francois could then upgrade the road and come in with an A and R plan.
You're proposing six lots?
It's the dream, but...
Just asking, just asking.
That's the max we could get, based upon upland requirements, and, and basically, you know, minimum lot requirements. Lots four, three and four would be sixty thousand square foot lots, all upland. Lot one would have, lot one would have probably forty-five thousand square feet of upland. Lots five and six, similar, more than an acre of upland, so that's the maximum we could possibly do. What we'd have to do, we'd have to get the wetland line reconfirmed, we'd have to do perk tests. We have some perk, there are some perks that are approved, are passed on lot five, that I'm not showing in this plan, and we have some perks in the back, behind the existing house, that have passed. So, we're pretty confident we can get some perks to go, whether we get six, you know, the question, the big question mark is whether we get four on the left side, the house is somewhat in an awkward position, and the driveway would cut right through lot four, so it's, all it is, the concept at this point, whether we would get five or six total. Right now, he has four, they're retreat lots, you're restricted to seventy-five-foot setbacks in property lines, it really infringes on everything, and since we know it's an ancient way, there's no argument about it, we'd like to come in with a plan that defines the ancient way, the bearings and distances, and obviously an upgraded gravel road, to something that would meet standards for fire protection.
But I see a lot of lines relative to the back lot, what about the rest of the road? Goes from Perry Hill through, I guess, the adjacent lot?
Yeah, the other block, the Broden block.
The Broden's block.
Well, that's a great question.
I mean, offhand, I'm, I'll tell you right now, I'm opposed to creating, you know, a great road that doesn't have...
A little copocho.
That, yeah, that doesn't get to the town road.
Yep. He has a, the thirty-foot way carries all the way back to Perry Hill, so although we're not showing it, we understand that we would have to, we would have to widen it all the way through, from beginning to end. And he would have the right to do that, as, because he has rights through the way. Whether the other butter was chipping or not, he may not, and he may benefit. Nothing we can do about it, but yes, we understand that, we couldn't have a twelve-foot widening out to twenty.
Little goat's head going.
It wouldn't be the first time something like that's...
But it wouldn't serve any purpose.
Now, what about, what's the total length of Perry Hill Road up to Trip's way, the cul-de-sac at the end, about, about?
About...
Sixteen hundred.
Sixteen hundred?
About.
Okay. I know that that was a waiver that was granted for length of road on the subdivision for that lot. Oh, we have it on that phone, maximum dead-end street.
Give us it, Henry. Is that what you're looking for?
Thirteen hundred eighty-eight, eighty-eight feet.
I have so many questions on that, I keep it with me all the time now.
No town water out there, right?
No, it was, always.
So I think it's, but...
What is it with, what, I forget now, what is it with no town road, what's the dead-end? Is it a thousand feet?
One thousand feet. And that makes sense, because in the memo, there was discussion here, showing greater than about a feet.
Do that back when you done on me.
To the, from Perry, from Perry Hill to the Trip property is thirteen hundred twenty-four feet.
Well, I think the biggest challenge you might have is that portion of the road is from Perry Hill to this portion of...
Yes.
Your client's property. Because for six lots, you're going to have to put in like a regular subdivision road in.
I mean, it's, the whole thing's interesting, I mean, I don't have background on ancient ways at all.
I remember this is an ancient way, I remember it passed as an ancient way, went through, went through a lot of documentation and lawyers and stuff and everything, I remember it came through, and it worked out well as an ancient way. But if you're going to put six houses in there, you're going to need an upgraded road. I mean, you're going to have, now they want sidewalks, there's no F's, A's, and B's now, you're going to have to put a sidewalk on one side, no F's, A's, and B's anymore.
Well, the question would be, would it have to be a definitive, or would it be an A and R? The road is up, is the planning board determine what...
I don't know, I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Yeah.
I don't either, so, once we find that out, our thought initially is...
You're saying it's a way?
It's already a way.
And you're asking if the frontage is, if it's any other kind of road?
Correct, so then the question would be, almost like a paper street, that's not built. If we, if we came in with a plan that showed what it would be built to, and you found it acceptable, we would then have to build the road in order to then come in with an A and R plan. And a definitive, we could go through the definitive process, and obviously the approval would be subject to it, and you can hold lots, and then we build the road. We could do it two different ways.
Well, you've only got thirty feet to work. Well, you've only got thirty feet to work with, so you've got a number of waivers from the subdivision requirements. Those are always one to try and get.
And then it's the intent, and there's potential to do more building out here. So this road could end up serving not only these six lots, but this could be fully developed.
Now, now I have a waiver to further extend the road.
Right, you have to have a waiver to...
Without water, I think that's a difficult task. Because that, this was stipulated as only one.
That's right.
One, and no, and that was it.
That's beautiful.
And I don't, I don't think he has any intentions.
That's gorgeous.
And he, he has been approached by Mark and he's on board for any upgrade to the road. And he may even chip in.
I would say he would like the road put in, but he doesn't want to pay for it.
No, I believe, he's a good neighbor and he sees the value in having a better road in the wind out. He's a long ways to get to his house, so...
Can I stand this, if I may?
Yes, sir.
Also, with the four retreat lots, there would be some wetland replication that would have to take place in the front.
Correct.
So one of the main reasons to do this is to avoid getting, going near the wetlands, avoid replicating any wetlands. And that's one of the main reasons to do this. I have four lots now, like David has stipulated. I don't think that sixth lot will actually come to fruition. I don't, unless, maybe. But if we end up with five, the main point is to just warn the, you know, have the lots, but not to deal with the wetlands. Really just to avoid replication, avoid anything to do that. My brother owns the beginning half. There wouldn't be any issue with me going in and widening that to, or, or making it to whatever standard you think is appropriate. And to go all the way to the back, the gentleman in the back, there's no problem with him. And like you said, I think he would probably even help pay for it. But there's not, not a problem upgrading that gravel road.
Interesting.
Did you remember before, can he use an ancient, a documented ancient way as frontage for building lots?
I'm gonna send that right up to...
I was gonna say, I don't, I don't have that one on the top of me.
Right. I mean, I think that's, that seemed like the absolute critical question.
Yes.
Right. And I mean, if the answer is yes, then we've got to consider it. If the answer is no, then we're done.
Right. So that's a question. If you want to formulate the question and send it, you know, forward it to John Eikman at KUO. We'll get an answer on that. And then the second thing is, Dave, we have Tuesday morning meetings
Okay.
with all the department chairs. And we typically review developments like this.
Sure.
So...
We're looking for input.
I would invite you, that's very convenient for you. Everybody's there.
Okay.
So we'll put you on the docket for one of the upcoming weeks.
Okay. And we invite the planning board to look at, drive all the way up to the cul-de-sac at any given time. Mark lives in the second house, his brother's up here. And we just figured we'd bring it before you talk about it, come back in a month. And hopefully get some positive feedback from department heads, from the council. And, you know, we feel like we have something solid to work with, it's just a matter of how we get to the end and which process we use. Because Mark, right, if we go with the current plan, he has to build a common driveway. And he has to cut right through the wetlands here. And he may be clipping wetlands over here, too. It's not the ideal situation. And this is using the same road that's been there for a hundred and forty years.
Yeah, I mean, the other, I mean, the other question is, I mean, there's using it as frontage for four lots, which he has now. Or using it for more lots. I mean, that's the other, that's, that's the other issue.
Correct.
And then to create that cul-de-sac off the end of an ancient way to get even more lots out of it, that's...
That's already there. The cul-de-sac's already there.
It is already there. This isn't approved. Okay, okay.
There's a house beyond that, correct?
There is a house beyond the cul-de-sac. I haven't been out there since the house was built, but Mark says it's just past the cul-de-sac. But the cul-de-sac was...
Now, they use that road right there to get to that house?
Yes.
It was granted, I remember.
That was, that was granted, that's approved. And it was, it was approved for only, I want to say the plan says, one lot.
One lot.
And only one lot.
Well, that's, that's an issue, too.
Because that, that was, that was consideration of the waiver on the length of the...
There's a note right above the title block. It says, "Planning board condition of approval. Approval of this plan by the Christian planning board will prohibit any future extension of the private roadway shown for the purposes of creating additional frontage. Until such time as the property is serviced by municipal water or changes to planning board regulations otherwise permit such a proposal. The proposed road layout shall remain private." And this last one was a building permit can't be issued until a cul-de-sac is built.
Interesting.
That's right.
We need a motion to bring this to the Tuesday morning get-together?
Good.
Is there a motion?
Sure. Let's, let's have the powers that be review the proposal to improve the road from Perry Hill Road up to the previously approved cul-de-sac.
And that'll still be an informal meeting?
Yes.
You just, you got everybody in this room at the same time and you can get it out of the way one shot.
Sure.
Hold on one second. Of course, I ran out of tape.
I second that motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'll leave the packets, that'd be good for you.
Yeah, this is for us, we'll have a future...
You wanna, need a couple packets for the meeting?
You know what, hold on to those and bring it to the Tuesday morning meeting.
Okay.
Henry's got his.
If the nail on the head would have said that, that'd be an equal, like that.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you for your time. Okay, we'll see you in the picture.
I thought it sounded like the same question we just kind of went around while we did Morse's reading. It's the same exact thing.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thanks, guys, have a great night. Well, I have a next meeting, Dave, you have a date you want to next meeting? The twenty-fourth, you want it?
Memorial Weekend next month, before that, right? Before that.
November's Day, Memorial Weekend's the twenty-seventh. Oh, you don't want, the twenty-fourth is too close?
Mine, I don't care. It's before. No matter to me, what I'm just saying.
Twenty-fourth, okay with you guys?
Okay, that's, that seems like, this is May?
Yeah.
Yes.
Do you mind the twenty-third? Let's double check that.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
Sure.
I had my left eye on instead of my right eye. So our next meeting will be May twenty-third. You can do the Tuesday night game. You still have the planner update? Is there anything special?
I won't add to it.
No?
I won't add. Except that the document that you passed over here that goes with the bylaws, we don't need to put a signature or date on that.
Okay.
One thing that is interesting to note is that the state appears to have put together a financing plan for the commuter rail. Going into...
Yeah, they're gonna delay again.
Right.
No, again?
Yes.
You know, that's it. I've been involved with that project for a long time. Or used, I should say, a long time ago. But it's always, you know, two steps forward, one step back. But we'll keep our eye on that, because if that ever did occur, it would have a big impact on our construction and pressure on my involvement.
Big time.
Yeah.
Well, that's always been the myth, anyway, that you'd be able to get the train here, everybody would start coming down here and... I mean, they kind of already have, I mean...
Right, right.
Well, they have, I mean, there are, they're, they're, they're had a lot of locals that can afford a half million dollar house.
Right.
That takes a considerable income in order to swing by.
All the time.
I mean, the, the little two-bedroom house across from the park, I mean, that went for just a shade over four hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
Two bedrooms.
Wow.
Yeah. I mean, it's new, but...
No problem selling it.
No.
None.
I can't, I can't imagine, what the hell. And it got two bedrooms.
Took a while to sell that.
It did. Well, they, they built it and then the couple that it was built for split.
Hooked it up.
No. They're related to it.
Yeah. Well, that's what I heard, anyway. I mean, thanks.
With that, we got nothing else?
Anything else?
That's it.
Is there a motion?
Motion to close the meeting?
Second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
At seven fifty-five. Thank you, folks, we'll see you next month.